We can work on a couple of things while we're waiting for the mayor to come budget schedule. I'd like to start our hearings in March if everyone or we can do late February depending on availability. Chief and I need probably two or three weeks to get it together and they're getting ready to go. It's getting ready to go out to him for his input the end of this week, first part of the week. So if we did. The twenty fifth of February, a work session on a Tuesday night, does that work for everybody?
Okay.
Coney? She's looking.
I'm checking right now.
I'm checking too, yeah.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. We have a lot to talk about this year with the budget because I think this is a year we're going to have to propose a potential tax increase.
What? To go along with the increase with the electrical and.
Yeah. Do you know what the state's doing now? I have a call with them on Monday or not the state Pepco. They're going, the state is going to stop paying for the elect, uh, streetlights on state highways and force the local jurisdictions to pay it.
So we're gonna go dark.
You know, I, that, I'm, I'm anxious to hear the reasoning and the logic behind it. I have a call with them on Monday. With Pepco because that's just, we need to, if that's the case, we need to try to argue that through the legislature or through the.
Yeah.
The commission, uh, rate commission because that, that seems cuckoo.
So that would be Kennelworth?
Yes.
Wow. Wow, wow, wow.
And then I could see it leading to stoplights and traffic signals because see, they pay for this traffic signal at Decatur and, and Kennelworth.
Well, did you say the state? So would that follow to the county or us?
No, it fall to us probably. Because it's in our jurisdiction.
I'm sure the county is going to dump it on each town and city.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so the twenty fifth works to start budget, alright, and then the fourth of March is a work session night. Is that work good?
Yeah, that was good to me, Ron.
Okay. Everybody's a yes, eighteenth of March?
Yes.
And hopefully that will be the last one and then the rest we can do for April, May work sessions.
Thank you, Rod, sorry.
Coney, you can't?
No, I have central committee at night.
Okay, what about the twenty fifth?
That works.
Betsy?
I'm good.
Sarah?
Yes, that, that works.
Okay, alright. Thank you, and I'll check these dates with the mayor, hopefully.
Hey Rod, um, if there's anything into April that's like. The week of the fourteenth. Or the twenty first, I'm not going to be available.
Okay, no, we, our work session for April scheduled the first and then the council meeting is the ninth.
The ninth, yep, okay, cool. I didn't know we had budget stuff that was going to need to be.
Yeah, so we, we would do that on the, on the first.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, very good.
You would think I would know this by now, but.
That will be good, but we got a lot to talk about. We, we met with. Tomorrow that works one day a week and he's going to update all of the valuation sheets for the properties and then. We are, the surveyor is doing the boundary lines and so we're starting that. We also are starting the town hall. Project of visiting with the vendors on Monday, we're starting to look at that and how that's going to, to go too, so that, that's getting going. So let's see, what else? Back to our, we've got budgets calendar set back to just a quick update on the flood resilience program. Uh, we have a grant with the Environmental Finance Center in the port towns and we, when we are finished. Um, Coney is our representative on that and when we are finished, we will have a work plan for projects to help with flood resilience in our communities. Um, that'll, it'll be programs that might help residents, it'll be infrastructure programs for the town and that kind of thing, so. Um, Coney and my, did I get that fairly close to right? It's very interesting because we're partnered in with a lot of the coastal Bay Area people that, uh, communities, uh, Annapolis, Cambridge. Uh, just a lot of them, so that project will be ongoing. Our nonprofit partner is Joe's Movement Emporium. So. They, we have homework each, each between sessions and, um, and so it's, uh. Primarily our focus is going to be on stormwater, um, rain events and drought and so. Um, climate change in that regard and. The walkable watershed grant is ending and so there'll be one more session where all of the people that signed up for. Rain barrels will get the opportunity to come and pick them up. We don't have a lot in Edmiston, probably about ten or twelve and then, um. We're out of those, but, um, the, and then our project that we're getting as a result of that grant with. The Environmental Finance Center and University is a design of the forty ninth in Decatur Street. Intersection as a pervious pavement stormwater project that would help with flooding that occurs. Uh, at that low area every time it is heavy rain, so, um, we're excited about that. The engineer that designed Comer Manners. Um, recent one project that they did is going to do those design concept for us. I didn't hear back from the mayor about starting, but we'll just keep talking and so we don't all end up on that. Go ahead, Betsy.
Rod, um, have you talked to the group that did the, um. The crosswalks about coming back in and finishing up the one on fifty second and fifty first?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Fifty second.
And fifty first.
Okay.
And have you looked into having the middle of the street painted at the big crosswalks?
Yes, that'll be part of our curb and gutter program this spring, so, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Because I like playing Frogger. And I'm sure Coney knows the same thing, right?
Um, we can talk about the agenda too, uh, for next week. Uh, we have just a few things on there. Uh, we have a handicap space request at fifty first and, um, uh, Decatur at Mrs. Hall's house. It'd be on the, the handicap space would be on fifty first and he has a doctor's permit and state approval on that, so. Uh, any questions about that? That's on your agenda next week to approve. Um, we put up the sign and paint the curb. The, um, I was telling Betsy, we have the award of the engineering on the streetlights there. They've already started their formality, but it, it's our community development block grant to put streetlights on fifty second from. Crittendon down to the rec center and it'll be the green, um, green ones that, um, you see on Decatur, so. Additional lighting and I understand, I, I do, we do, or do, we're doing this over on Forty Seventh Avenue. And we did have a resident complain about, uh, adding additional lighting that it's bad for the wildlife, bad for, um, people and. But I did explain to her that we're doing it primarily from a safety reason and a safety standpoint, the. Um, making sure that everyone's safe and the cars are safe and can be, um, seen well, so. Um, and then the sidewalk, uh, project is also, um, uh, going to have bids out for next week for you to approve for fifty second from. Um, from town hall to Crittendon and then down Crittendon to the park. That was the project that we gave up the money for through the safe routes to schools and we got the grant then from. Community Development Block Grant, so we're really happy about that and really excited.
Oh wait, Rod, can you say that again? We, we got a replacement grant?
Yes, uh huh.
Oh, cool.
Without the regulations.
Exactly. Awesome.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so the same, hopefully the same company that did your street, um, Sarah will do, end up doing this one. Um. And then. We have the purchase of the property at the corner of fifty first and, uh, Decatur, the purchase contract to Mr. Fun. Uh, ten, it's one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That space would become green space until you all decide. Um, what you would like to see it developed into and, uh, one of the suggestions Betsy had made was to. Make that a kind of a place where we could do some little small events like we do up at the Veterans Park, only we don't have to. You know, we don't have to really be out in the street, we can be right up, you know, in that, in that area, so.
And we wouldn't have to close off Decatur Bridge.
Correct. Bridge, we could close fifty first, yeah, yeah, so that's a good suggestion and something to, uh, think about. Any other questions, questions on the minutes? Okay, on the agenda, then, um, I, I guess Chief, do you want to, uh, do we want to go ahead and? Uh huh, yes.
Before we jump into, um, something from the chief, I wondered if we could. Have a follow-up conversation about what's going on with everything that was torn down in the, um, park?
Yes, I haven't heard, uh, back from them, but they are cleaning it up, um, slowly as they, um. Take away the trees that they've, uh, cut, but I'll get a plan from Mr. Carter. On how they're going to, that's what I asked for and so I'll get back with him and get the plan of what they're going to do to reforest it or to, um, you know. Put in grass or, um, mow it or whatever they're going to do.
Um, could we possibly, could you also ask them for a schedule for when everything's going to be removed?
Mm hmm.
Um.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean ideally, you know, before spring.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Sarah, I told Rod that I took Taz down there for the first time, the way it looks now. She wanted no parts of any of that. In the past, that's where. We would go antler shedding back there when she'd get her antlers for the year, so I don't know what's. Been mulched up in there or, you know, what debris was sucked in there, but she wanted no parts of it.
Mr. Cameron asked, um, if he could harvest some of the wood and I will ask, um, MNCPBC that question and then let, uh, let him know that. If that is, um. Possible. Okay, I don't see the agenda, so somebody tell me what else is on the agenda.
See here. I think you pretty much touched on everything. We just got, have the, um, two applicants.
Flood resilience, we did the budget calendar, we did.
Um, other than the centennial event, do we have any other events for February, March, April?
The twenty second.
Yes, twenty second is our big event over at USA Party Rental and all of you have an active role in that. It is, um. Our Black History Cultural Celebration and we're celebrating all cultures and it's, uh, going to be a fun event. We unveiled the. The mural for, um, Asian American, we're having, um, dinner, we have entertainment coming from a wide variety. Of folks, we have the honor guard, we have, um, somebody singing, we have a trivia contest that, uh, Sarah. Are you planning to be there on the twenty second, Ms. Sarah? And Mr. Johnson, are you planning to be there on the twenty second of February at six thirty for that event?
I'm gonna try.
Alright, good, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Rod, I need to check.
Okay, we're going to assign tasks to each of you, so please let us know that you're going to be there. Uh, Betsy has said no and Coney said yes, um, Avery, so. We have, uh, Mr. Johnson, Coney and the mayor so far. Oh, here comes the mayor, so. Hi Mayor.
Hello, forgive me. I hope you started.
We did, we're, we're all the way through everything except for meeting the two police officers.
But that's where you would start.
We wanted you there for that, so. I think, are we, oh, back to our event, so we were just discussing the event, uh, Ms. Coney. Mr. Johnson is coming, Sarah's checking her calendar and we talked about, um, assignments and what's going on for that evening. Please, if you know somebody, encourage them to RSVP so we have some idea. Right now we're up over, um, probably about eighty people. But we're growing every day, so, uh, we have to let the food caterer know on Friday and if we're going to make any changes there, so.
We have council members checking their calendar?
We also, Mayor, I'll get with you, we set up a budget calendar, uh, with some work sessions, so I'll get with you and go over those dates, um.
Okay.
Availability and, um, let's see, we talked about the, uh, upcoming agenda. And no questions, and so we're ready for the chief to introduce the two police candidates.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Mayor.
What? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dude, who, who might not be able to make it? Is that Ms. Turberville or was that Ms. Coney? Oh, that was Ms. Betsy? It's, oh, I think you did say that before, that you may not be able to make it.
It, it's my nephew's birthday.
Yeah, you did mention, okay. Alright, but everybody else is good. Okay.
Mayor, I have to check.
Ms. Turberville, you were on the committee.
The original.
This one, this is the committee for the gala.
Isn't that what this is?
Well, it's replace the gala.
Oh, okay. Okay, oh yeah, 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 we did change it. Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back. I'll harass you offline, okay?
That's okay.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I will introduce our first candidate is Demetrius. Um, he is a currently a metropolitan special police officer in the District of Columbia. Who was interested in becoming a police officer in the town of Edmiston, so I'll let him continue his introduction. If you guys have any questions for him, feel free to ask him.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Demetrius Johnson and like Chief said, currently I work as a special police officer in Washington DC. And I always wanted to be a police officer and when I finally got the chance to meet Chief. Um, it was, it was a great first impression. Turns out we both live in the same complex. That I didn't know about until a couple of months ago, so when he told me, it's like, hey, I'm the chief of this department. Would you like to be interested in working? I was like, are you serious? Then that's when we built the relationship from there. I already met Mr. Rod. And I just hope to bring my talents and. Meet everyone in the community.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here. I know you've been around for, what, about a month or so? Getting familiar with the, I'm sorry?
I say bottom off.
Yeah. Getting familiar with the town. Can you tell me what it is that you, um, like about the town thus far since you've been. Driving around and, and seeing the residents in the town, um, and you know, we have a rather large. But I know you haven't had an opportunity to see everything, not even half the town yet.
What caught my attention at first was just the decoration, like, that was the first thing I saw, I was like, wow, and like you said. I didn't drive around the whole thing, but just the entrance between the, the, um, station and just the rose. I like how everything is decorated and that really caught my attention. The lights were just bright, especially when I came around when it's like. The Christmas trees and all the Christmas lights still up, so that was cool.
Mm hmm. Got like something you could be proud of, huh?
He doesn't have.
Looks better than that Dagone Temple Hills area where you're.
That area could be. They can do some work over there.
Oh, it's not too bad, it's not too bad. So as a special police officer, I'm sorry, I'm, I may have missed it. How many years have you, um, done that work?
So this would be going on two years.
Two years, and what attracted you to that?
So before I became a special police officer, I was a security officer at, I know, well, Fairfax Hospital. And that's when I was looking to branch off into law enforcement, but I had no experience in law enforcement, so I wanted to. Try something similar first before I was interested in, uh, police department, so this is when I found this company. And it's, the special police office is similar to like a regular police, um, department. We had the same powers and everything, same training. Um, it's just, I'm just here for a property, that's it.
Mm hmm. Who, who, who gave you that information that, um, if you get into security and. Or if you become a special police officer, it is close to being a police officer since you want to become a police officer? Who, who in your life told you that? Was it where you worked? Was it a friend? Was it somebody in the family? You know, some, some stranger in the street?
Um. It was more just me because in my family, I would be the first police officer in my family, so it was no family members. I just grew up around. I guess the security business.
Uh huh.
Yeah, because I only have like one friend that's a security officer.
Mm hmm. And so you, you talked to them and they kind of told you?
Oh.
So you Googled it or what? How'd you find this information out?
So I found this company actually on Facebook. I was just exploring and what caught my attention was their patrol vehicle. And I was like, ooh, I want to drive that, so that's when I looked into their website and company. And I like how their uniform looked and like I said, their patrol vehicle, so that's when I.
Okay, I'm going to let another council person, uh, jump in, but, so besides, um, um. Police officer ring, no, besides protecting and, and serving. What, what are, um, some of your other strengths that you recognize about yourself? What are some of the things that you like to do? Um, you know, is it computer, is it, um, uh, you know, a sport, is it?
Oh, I grew up playing football. So I grew up playing football, I love computers and games. So it's like football. Computers, games, the Playstation. I love cars and motorcycles too. I'm, I'm, I'm a car guy.
So you buy them or you race them or you build them?
So I, it's like a, I build them up, just show off the cars.
You like to work on cars?
Yeah, they can be a pain in the butt too, but I like to work on cars.
So you know, um, car parts and all of that, so if something's going on with the car, you can say, oh, that sounds like the so-and-so.
Correct.
Uh huh.
We don't have motorcycles, but we have a go-kart you could drive.
I would love to drive a go-kart.
And so Mr. DeRici's field to tell you guys that he's actually been stalking the Edmiston, uh, social media from the time of Edmiston to our. Police Department's social media page for the last six months too. And that's another way he get in contact with us.
Ah, so that's that computer side.
I have, I have been looking online.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any, um, anyone else have any questions?
I'm just curious to know, like, what do, what does the special police officer do in DC?
Okay, so.
Normal, I guess.
Okay, so save you own a certain building or business, you will hire a special police officer to patrol that property. So we're the police on that property only.
And where in DC are you working now?
So with this company, they have different locations, so right now I'm at Audi Field, we have Nationals Park, we have a Home Depot location and. This is, whenever he gets contracts, we are scheduled to work there. Like upcoming in like two weeks to have a partnership with Metro Transit, we're going to be working the metro stations. So it's like whenever he gets a contract and gets approved, we're sent over there.
Alright, thank you.
No problem.
Chief, it's Sarah, I have a question. You'll be shocked. Um. Mr. Johnson, I'm Sarah Turberville, I'm one of the council members and, um, I work closely with the chief on a lot of issues around. Um, our police department, um, including, and, you know. Trying to encourage community policing and, and accountability. Um, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about your experience and comfort level and working with. A community that is as diverse as Edmiston is, um, nearly sixty percent of our population is, um, Spanish speaking, Latino, um. And we have a number of people from all over the world who live here. Uh, many of whom I think are, are probably feeling unsettled by, by what we're seeing at the federal level, um.
Right.
We think it's really important for our community to feel safe here, um. So I wonder if you can talk a little bit about, um, sort of, you know, your, your experience and your, and your, and your mindset considering, um. The demographics of, of Edmiston.
Right, so I started back when I was, well, as a security officer, I love building a relationship with the people around me. And especially with the company with now, our clients, we have like a community police relationship. We're like. Close friends with that supervisor over there, that manager over there. And in our Home Depot area in Ro Island, it's a lot of Hispanics and. It's like a very diverse area and we just love the area around there. And it's like good for us to like get along with everyone because, like you said, some people see the stuff on the news and all they see is police and. What they see, it can be bad, especially in their eyes and with community policing, we want to just show them, hey, like. We're not here to do this to you, that to you. When we come to work, we want to make friends, but also. Protect people while they're at work, make sure they feel safe, like, hey, you can come joke with me, talk about sports, you don't have to. Walk on the other side of the street when you see me walking, you can say, hey, you can wave to me, we can just enjoy our time and. My girlfriend, she's from El Salvador, so she's trying to teach me Spanish, I'm, I'm trying to learn it too, but. It's interesting, I enjoy going over her house with her family, dancing, just enjoying the good time. So, the Spanish level, I'm getting there, uh. She, she, she's stressing teaching me, but I, I'm getting there.
Thank you.
No problem.
Alrighty, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, as of now?
Or you ask the chief everything?
Yeah, I kind of like talk to him, talk his head off.
Well, that, that's fine, that's to be expected. Okay, well, we, um, we're glad you, you came on this evening, we appreciate your time.
Oh, bro.
Um, just hope that, um, you'll be able to, uh, go through, uh, the training and the process. And take Edmiston serious. Uh, this is a small town, but, um. It's a serious job, I know you know that, uh, policing, sometimes people don't take the small town serious, but it's serious. Because it is small and so be accountable, uh, for yourself as well as, um, you know, those that you work with. Um, we have a, a young chief that's cool and all of that, but he is serious about his job and, um. Respect goes a long way, um, and we're a supportive council, we support you as, um. Police officers, but we support our chief, uh, number one, uh, so, uh, we welcome, we welcome professionalism. Uh, so uh we welcome, we welcome professionalism. And we welcome good officers and we welcome uh those who want to be safe and want to keep our community as safe as possible, you know. No one can say safe, but um that's what you're here to do is to protect and to serve, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright.
I introduce the next one uh once we sign up with Demetrius. If anybody have any other questions, we could sign him out.
You have yourself a good evening, sir.
Thank you. You too. Enjoy your night, guys.
Alright, the next advocate will be Mr. Edwin. Uh, he works along, he worked alongside of us with Public Works. And the thing that I liked about Edwin was he was a hard worker, you know, no matter what it was, whether it was asked of him to do, whether it was on the police side or the town side. He was there. Um, so when he came to me with the question of can he be a police officer, I said, sure, why not? Um, so I'll let him go ahead and introduce himself and give a little bit about his background, Mr. Edwin.
We can't hear you very well. Not much. You're doing that on purpose, we know. You don't want us to hear you.
That's the best way during the interview.
I'm gonna try to speak up a little bit louder.
That's a little better.
Uh, hi guys. My name is uh Edwin Zalea. Um, it's good to see some familiar faces on here and for those that uh or I haven't been to that person. Hello, uh as Chief said, I was working, I was doing public works for the town for a couple of months last year. And yeah, when I had the opportunity to finally talk to Chief, because everyone kept telling me, talk to Chief, talk to Chief. Um, because I was uh talking to Steve, I told Steve about my past, that I wanted to become a police officer by directing via the Dallas Police Department and Airport. Um, but that didn't go through and my six months was coming up, so I could rethink the test and everything. But I was like, I'm gonna just talk to Chief and see if he gives me this opportunity. As he was saying, I I kind of became a hard worker a lot. Uh, I drove with a hardworking dad. He taught me a lot of hands-on things. He worked a lot in construction, so I've always had that uh work hard mindset. Anywhere I go, I like to have a good impression. Um, I wouldn't like to leave any fat. Rod would know every time he was around. I'll ask him for more and more work, even though it might have been a little bit more than uh I was supposed to do. Hence, I was helping Chief doing some police uh policing stuff and there's uh events for the community. Uh, but yeah, uh uh a little bit about me, I was born in the DC area. People over here when they were uh teenagers, young teenagers, they went to Bell High School in DC on Sixteenth Street. Uh, met there and then a couple of years later, I was born. Never really left the DC area. I stayed there. The house that my dad actually built, so really local, I kind of know, not, I can't say I know everything, but I do know the area pretty well. Uh, my uncle, Mr. Bonilla, he's lived there ever since I could remember, honestly, so I have been in and out of Edmiston a handful of times, well, more than a handful of times in my life. Um, just visiting my uncle and just hanging out. I remember uh going to the park right there, across the field farm, got to kid a lot with my cousins. What interested me in becoming a police officer is growing up in school. Uh, every time we used to have a job there, I remember firefighters would come out. DMs will come out, police will come out. What always used to interest me was like the police officers. Go to their vehicle, they'll sit in, I'll just kind of look around and talk to them a little bit more. That's always something that I remember growing up in high school. Always looking forward to the job there and hanging out with police officers and getting conversations about them.
Alright, the mayor is busy. Anybody, any council members, any other mayor have a question for Mr. Edwin?
Uh, but I just want to say uh both of these young men have impressed me greatly. Uh, I met Demetrius just briefly and then I've run into him um multiple times. His personality is very dynamic. He's very outgoing. He he engages quickly and Edwin, as he said, he took on every task and then some. Um, and came back for more during the time he was filling in and he he also talked to me about um being a police officer and his real desire to make that happen at some point in time. So I'm glad that um that he followed up with that and and is um is potentially joining us. He's uh he was a pleasure. He's just a pleasure to work with. He's he's positive. He's um personable and I think he would be a great asset. As di- with Demetrius.
Mayor, did you have anything, mayor, for Edwin?
Um, I couldn't, I couldn't really hear his whole presentation, but um I did, well, I've I've met him a few times. I've seen him, seen the work that he does and how he gets along with the staff. Um, uh, the huge help that he was in the town um during the time that Mr. Vanilla was out. How he stepped in and just um got the work done and uh during the time of our parades and so on and so forth. So I'm excited to have someone that is excited to be in the town and wants to be in the town. And um I just say the same thing about the professionalism and I can see that you do have the professionalism, the dedication um and the respect um of the town. You respect the town. That's so important to respect the town and what we do and just to continue the standards. Um, so um I'm just glad you want to be a part.
So my plan is for um they'll be going up through the orientation this month. They would do the physical agility test and then they will be accepted into the academy in April. Would I be accepted to the academy uh February, but start the academy in April. Um, so I went back to the drawing board and I figured if we start over fresh and get two fresh applicants who have no police experience um with a police agency that we can mold them into the way that Emerson residents and Emerson's uh citizens would like them to be molded into a Emerson police officer versus taking them from another agency and having to deal with the bad traits and the bad apples and trying to mold them into our way with still having bad habits built into them. I figure if we shape them up our own way and 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 rooting them from day one or even to the day they graduate and continue the what how what the at the the whole basis is for Emerson police officers and just be actually inside the town of Emerson. Um, what we look forward to and what we expect of them, we should be good to go, uh moving along in twenty twenty five.
And understanding that uh no one stays at a place, not that, you know, when you're you're young, no one stays at a place forever. But um just expecting some consistency, understanding that there's an investment being made and just um hoping that um you know, there'll be some some dedication and understanding that um you know, training and investment has poured into you. That's all.
Chief, can you remind us how long um the academies were?
So the academy is approximately, uh I'm gonna say nine months to be on the safe side. They're trying to make it shorter. But we're looking at nine months. Uh, each candidate must uh complete and achieve almost a thousand objectives inside that's required by state. Um, all everything did it from de-escalation to mental illness and how to treat and how to deal with it on scenes to first aid, to emergency vehicle operations, to implicit bias. So they're doing a lot of stuff within nine months uh of training, meeting every day, Monday through Friday, from eight in the morning till almost five at night. And then once they uh graduate, the state requires them to complete two hundred and fifty hours of what we call field training off uh field training hours. I have increased that. I've actually doubled that to four hundred hours to make sure that each officer uh undergoes that training. Um, so I don't do the bare minimum and a lot of people always say, well, Emerson, y'all got a lot of FTO hours. I want to make sure that the officers are ready when they're out there by themselves, instead of just throwing officers out into the fire. Just say, hey, you did your two hundred and fifty hours. You're a police officer go by yourself. Well, in that two hundred and fifty hours, you may have never ran a carjack. You may have had to deal with a suicidal person. So with four hundred hours, you have enough hours to get at least a hint of how things are running in the town of Emerson and a proper protocol and a way to do it within four hundred hours. Hmm, that's all I have, Mr. Edwin. If anybody have any other question for Mr. Edwin, um we can release him as well.
I'm good. Thank you so much for being here tonight and in Edmiston. Thank you, Chief.
No problem. And if you, if anybody would like, I know that on agenda, I just got the email earlier today about our Red Speed cameras. I just want to give a quick update about that.
Very good.
Um, so they just met with Red Speed, just met with State Highway today. The approval will go out this week and then they'll start to send their contractors out to start the wiring for the camera. So we should be looking at issuing warnings by the end of March. No, no, uh, the late, you know, early part of April. They say with the red, with the red light engineering plans, that's going to take a little bit longer because of the ways how State Highway uh deals with their protocols when it comes to rear lights. But as of right now, the speed camera is on or going, uh, we should be up and rolling by no later than March, April, uh beginning of April.
Uh, it's interesting, Mayor. We have, we have earned when we stopped um the contract with our previous ultimate. Um, our budget amount to date matches almost our budget amount for the whole of last year. When they had the contract. So the payout um as a result of you know, ending and people still paying tickets, it's almost dropped off now for the red light camera to to nothing. On the speed camera, because we weren't paying the fees for the rental of the equipment, it has dou- it doubled so far um to date over last year's total, which was way below what we, you know, would hope for. Forty-five thousand dollars was way below two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, but um, right now we're up uh at about eighty thousand on our speed camera that we no longer have. As people have paid paid out the
Amen.
Paid out the the fine. So the year hasn't been a total bust for us. We aren't going to get very much um revenue in this fiscal year from as a result of the cameras. Because if they don't really go into effect until um April, the payments won't start coming in until June and uh July. And so um and then this, the the red light camera after that. So hopefully next year will be a full year, but um this year, we're not going to see much more uh revenue from those sources.
We needed to get something, though, you know? We were getting ripped off big time. So this is good. Any comments about that? Any questions? Very good. Thank you. Thanks for that update. Anything else, um, Chief?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, so was there anything else on the agenda?
No, I think we exhausted the agenda, Mayor. Want to go back and address anything?
Nope, I I just had a question for the council, um but did anybody else have anything? Any council member, anything?
I do, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a phone call and I talked to Chief about this from uh fifty-one fourteen Decatur Street. Um, she is a somewhat new resident, has been here for uh I think a little bit over a year now. But her and her husband were really concerned about the smell of gas on that block and um Chief told me that uh that it was normal, that it was coming from um pipes that were a little bit further. I guess, like hitting the ground and that's where the smell was coming from. Um, she said that her, she had talked to a few of her neighbors that had just been concerned for a few days about the smell. Um, and so I don't know if like maybe we could um draft like a letter that maybe can be dropped off to that area of the town, um just letting them know like that it's okay, um and just to like calm their fears a little bit. That can be in both English and Spanish. I think that might be helpful.
Where where does it come from? Where does the smell come from?
We we've been getting that complaint a lot since um I took over in twenty twenty, like twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three. It's coming from this opening. It's not an open, it's like a cap that's in the middle of Fifty First and Cridan. And depending on the weather, that smell travels from the intersection down to Decatur Street. Um, I've had the gas company come out. I've had the fire department come out with the gas meter and they all say that it's normal. Um, and it goes away and you may not spend it for a month or two months, then in one week, you might smell it for that entire week. And it is uh disturbing, but we uh we don't, we rarely get complaints on it. We may get one or two complaints during that week that you can really smell it and then no complaints after that. But what I can do is I can have Steve type up a letter uh with the Sisters of Jamilah and um get that out to the residents.
Yeah, and we we really need to advertise that they need to contact Washington Gas and have them uh come out and check it because we did also get a complaint just last week from Fifty Second and Decatur, Fifty Second Place in Decatur, rather. Um, they thought that because we'd done work uh with the electrical on a streetlight that we might have hit the gas line, but it it's the same problem. Ms. Coburn that lives on Fifty Second Place says every once in a while they get that same kind of thing like you're saying, where they they smell that gas thing and
It is a strong smell. I smelled it one time driving. That's what made me call the fire department is I drove through when we did the water main repairs. And I thought maybe they had popped something, but they came out and they said everything was fine.
But I I do think we ought to make sure we, uh as uh Councilmember Serrano has said, it, we need to get a uh number on there for Washington Gas. So when a resident smells it, they can call that number. Get a response.
I, can I make a friendly amendment to this idea about a letter? I I think the letter needs to come from Washington Gas because they're the ones that are giving the assurances. We don't, you know, we're just relying on their assurances. And so I think that it would be, I I just feel like this is sort of unacceptable for there to be a really strong smell of gas from time to time and we're and our residents are just supposed to say, okay, it's fine. I mean, if that smell is there, how, I mean, I guess I'm just not understanding how that's not like an ignition issue, right, that it could with the right kind of spark, like it could be problematic, but I either way, I feel like Washington Gas owes people assurances, not us.
Tony, I don't know if you've ever smelled it, but it comes out of the sewer.
When when I got the phone call, um I had just gotten home from work and I went out there and uh walked up the street with them. And yeah, I could smell it and I called the chief right away and I was like, is like, what's going on? Um, and I I gave them some reassurance, but you know, I could see it in their faces. They were not convinced. And like if a council member was telling me that, I also would not be convinced. To Sarah's point, I think it does need to come from, I agree that it does need to come maybe from more of a a more trusted voice of experts. That's not maybe us.
I have a, I have a construction contact at Washington Gas, Josh Horning, that's always responsive. So I can reach out to Josh and get the name of the person that would be the um in their office that would help with that and and uh get their information out via their letter. I think that's a good idea. I'll be happy to do that.
And I can tell you, since I've moved in to the house, we've always had that issue. And that's forty-some years.
It's a common, it it is. It's a common thing all throughout town. It's not just us. It's everywhere, but um but we, you know, like you said, people want to be assured that you aren't gonna uh light a match or something and blow up the house or whatever, so.
Could make sure it's also in Spanish.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Two families that called were Spanish speakers.
Sure thing. I'll get it to you too and you can get it recirculated, but we'll send it out also. But you can have it for circulation too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that makes all kinds of sense. I think that we should get something from someone that says this is why it's happening. Just tell us why it happens. I know um I know where we are in one of our pipes that are connected to the laundry room in our buildings. There's a smell that comes out of the pipes and it's similar to gas. And the reason that that smell comes out is because the drain is dry. And in order to alleviate the smell, we have to put just some water down there. And it gets rid of the smell. So for the longest time I was getting complaints that the laundry rooms were smelling. And it would really smell like a little bit of gas. And one of the contractors said, it's just because the drain is dry and put some water down and that's it. So sometimes it's something similar to that. So, yeah, we need to find out what the concept is, what's going on. But we need to get it from the expert. Thank you, Ms. Serrano. Bring that to our attention. I wanted to ask council and staff. With the temperature in the, on the hill, with everything that's going on, what we've heard in the news. And with everyone talking and I know the staff is, is around the town during the daytime and police officers. And you see things, have you noticed a change in the town? The temperature in the town and, and do you feel that there is something that we need to do? Is there any action that we need to take? Is there a, a letter that we need to write to our residents? Or is there something that we need to sign on? As far as going to the state, is there some type of legislation we need to pay attention to? That you think we need to pay attention to? Is there something that's tugging on your heart, your mind that you want to bring attention to? Because there's so much going on. I'm following it and then I get upset to follow it, but you can't help to follow it. Because eventually everything is gonna trickle, trickle down, trickle to the side. Immigration is on top of the list and we can't help it. That over sixty five percent of our population here. In Edmonton is Spanish speaking. So, we're gonna get questions and, yes, sir.
Mayor, we just got tonight Congressman Glenn Ivy and County Council Chair Jolene Ivy. Are hosting a town hall on February sixth. Seven thirty to help talk about and discuss some of the actions that have come out of the administration in the first fifteen days. And so that, we can advertise that obviously. One way to get information directly from them. I think they're focusing, it seems like that's focusing more. It says to discuss the executive orders and how they impact our residents here in Prince George's County. But one of the big things they're focusing on is jobs because of the threat of. Jobs being eliminated in various departments and contractors and that. So anyway, we can move that out. I'll have Jamila.
Yeah, and Jolene has been doing Know Your Rights.
Tracy, walking around, I find that more people are worried about what's gonna happen with the jobs. And utility bills are going, I had a couple people said that their electric doubled, almost tripled. I haven't got my electric bill for. Yet, so mine's been saying pretty much stay fast. I don't know if anybody else here has any problems with their. Electric bill going up, but for the most part, the ones with the immigration and stuff like that. The ones I've talked to, they said they know they're safe here in Edmonton. So we've made that over and over and over, you know, at every function, I think we. State, you're okay, you're safe here, talk to our police. So I, I'm sure there are some that are concerned, but the ones I've spoken to haven't been, you know, overly concerned about that. They say, one gentleman told me, goes, we hear one side, we hear the other side, we hear the, this side. We're not worried, but what we are worried about is, you know, are we gonna have jobs? You know, are we gonna be able to afford to turn the lights on in our house or heat our house?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think Sarah has her hand up.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, Mayor, I appreciate this. I have a couple thoughts and this just sort of comes from my, my day job. I work for an organization that is very focused on protecting the civil service, federal workforce. And also very cognizant of the actions of federal law enforcement as it could relate to. You know, basically trying to commandeer state and local law enforcement to engage in immigration activities. I think from my perspective, I think it could be useful. To share resources about. I mean, y'all, y'all let me know if you think this is, is something we need to spend any time on, but there's, there's a number of resources out there for people who are employed by the federal government. About knowing their own rights, right? And places that they can, can go to if they are, you know, concerned that they might be unlawfully terminated. So we could share out some of that. Separately on the immigration enforcement piece. What we're, what we're looking at in Trump two point O is very, very different than what we experienced the first time around. And the administration is being very aggressive, threatening to prosecute states and localities. For failing, for, for resisting. The new administration's dictates around. Supporting immigration enforcement. It is not, it is, it is, it is, the constitution does not permit the federal government to, to. Commandeer states and localities in that way, but there's certainly, you know, they're trying to, to. To instill fear, right? And to get people to sort of obey in advance rather than fight. Now, look, I think Prince George's County is gonna fight. I think the state of Maryland is gonna fight, but it doesn't mean that people still aren't fearful. And I, I think two things could be helpful from us. One is to do something akin to what we did. When I first came into office, which was those door hangers that. The chief at that time. Distributed along with some other chiefs in the other port towns that says like, you know, we are your local law enforcement. We are here to protect you. You do not need to worry that, you know, we are not going to. Like, we're not gonna participate in immigration enforcement, right? Like, we're here to ensure your public safety. Do not be afraid to call the police because you're afraid that someone, you know, is going to. Entertain a member of your family for an immigration violation. Maybe we can even find the old hanger. I think the old hanger was really well done. And then the second thing I think could be. For us to share Know Your Rights information with the community about what their rights are. If they encounter federal law enforcement, because it could be, it could be well beyond ICE. It could be CB, it could be Customs and Border Patrol. It could be the FBI. It could be like. But there's a lot of really good materials that I've already gathered for like the school board. That we could, we could distribute to folks. So that, so those would be my top two ideas about what I think would be helpful for us to do. And I'd be happy to support in any way.
We did push out immigration information in the newsletters and that went door to door. And it was the information that was provided by, I believe you, Sarah. So we can, you know, we can do a specific. You know, spread, two-page spread or something or a one-page spread and, and take it out door to door too. What you're suggesting. I don't remember the door hangers, but. I remember the conversation. I remember the conversation, but I don't, I just don't remember seeing a door, the door hanger. I don't think we had any. Yeah, I know we did them, but I don't think we have any around or left. From, from that, so we can chase those down.
Self and Lieutenant will come up with some and design and order some.
And let me go back in my photos. I feel like I have a photo of it somewhere, because I. I remember being like, go Edmonton.
I remember it, but I, I, I just don't recall having a surplus supply stuck somewhere that we could go back and grab one.
I just mean, if I, if I can find the photo of it, we'll have the, we'll have the.
That's a good, very good idea. That's, that's real good.
We have some of that information perhaps at the function on the twenty second. Information, table with other information we have.
Yeah, we have a lot of, and you know. Different cultures coming to that event and we could have a table certainly, like Mibri says, that has flyers and, and numbers and information. And we could do that at all of our events. We have, April, we start heavily again back. We, you know, we have dumpster day in, end of March. We, we, we can hand out those. Because it isn't gonna go away anytime in the near future in terms of actions. And so we can.
And with the feedings too, I mean, the food just.
Distribution, folks don't live in our community, but that's, that's okay. I see the Mary, Mary's thinking.
The table was good. I think we should have, always have Know Your Rights, like a Know Your Rights table, always. Yeah, I was thinking of a conversation that my granddaughter and I were having on the way to school this morning. And she was saying that she wish, she wishes that. And it was about information, just different information that was provided to her. As a student before she graduates out of high school. We were talking about the climate and things like that. And so I was reflecting on that while, yeah.
Okay, so we also have to get across to everybody out there that they're gonna read things, they're gonna see things, they're gonna hear things. They're not always right. That people will put things out just to scare others. You know what I mean? Tracy's looking at me like, what the hell did you just say?
Oh, no, no, that's, that's true. I was also thinking that, that, yeah. Yeah, but we're not getting a lot of that, though.
No, but I'm saying it, it's.
But that always.
Everything is gonna amp up and people had, you know, don't believe what you, you read or see in social media.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It'll eventually get to that, but that's not what's happening now.
No, I mean, I see a lot of stuff on social media that's. I can tell you is false. And I can tell you some stuff that is true, but there's a lot of stuff that. Is going on social media that is not even close to being the truth and it's just to scare. You know? People, I mean, it's just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you know.
Always happens.
We're gonna celebrate at least Edmonton's diverse culture on the twenty second of February. And I think that's gonna be a great, great response to what's going on right now. It's gonna help make people feel better and feel. Good about how Edmonton feels about all the many cultures that we have, because it's not just Hispanic culture. It's, it's a lot of cultures that make up our community and, and they're all gonna be a part of that on the twenty second. So that'll be a great, great reinforcement for those that can share and, and know what's going on. And I, I love the idea of the table that Avery came up with.
Good idea, good idea. Thank you, thank you for that information. And Connie, you sent some information in a text a couple of weeks ago and that was good. Matter of fact, I shared it with a couple of people, so thank you. I'm sorry.
I said I found the photo.
And thank you, Ms. Turberville.
So I'll, I'll email that and the Know Your Rights stuff.
Please, yeah, that'll be good. That's good. Okay, and then Chief will work on the door hanger. All right, so thank you. Mission accomplished. Thank you so much, guys. And we'll meet next week on Wednesday and thank you so much for those who are citizens who attended tonight. Thank you so much for signing on. Greatly appreciate your company hanging in there with us. All right. We'll take care. This. Is there a motion to adjourn our work session this evening?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. McCully and Ms. Serrano second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All right. Everybody have a good night.